All right, it is 6:57 PM. We are done with our executive session. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open up to public comment from the public. If you could raise your virtual hand or unmute yourself. Seeing no public comment from the public, we'll move on to public comment from the committee.
I just have one bit of, I just want to advise the committee as I did a couple of years ago in a similar circumstance. I was invited yesterday to participate on a Pittsburgh Access TV show next week. It's called "Fitchburg-Lemonster Area Politics." It's hosted by a classmate of mine from Lunenburg. And so this will be my second time sitting in on that show. He asked me for topics as potential topics, and I suggested Chapter 70 funding as a topic.
Aren't you brave?
And he went ahead, and I then advised that he invited a member of the Lunenburg, the Lemonster School Committee to also participate. So that will be taped next Wednesday. I don't know when it will air, but I just wanted to advise the members that I'll be engaged in that conversation. Should be.
Any other public comment from the committee? All right, seeing none, the next item on the agenda is the chair's report. I wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. On January 1st, the Mass, State, Senate, and Representatives were sworn in. I ended up congratulating our legislators. I did want to also mention that Senate President Karen Spilka had called out K-12 education funding in her speech for reform as a priority to tackle or review this session, that they need revisions and to reexamine the formula, and that communities are struggling throughout Massachusetts, and also regional school transportation and special education needed to be reviewed. On Sunday, President Biden signed HR 82 into law, the Social Security Fairness Act. And that was all I had. Next item on the agenda is review and approve minutes. We do have minutes in the folder. Any questions or comments, corrections? On December 4th, 2024, minutes. Any questions or comments, corrections on December 4th, 2024 minutes? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations. We had warrants from December 16th, 2024 to December 19th, 2024 totaling $237,027.11.
And there were also a few donations for acceptance this evening. You have a memo from Principal Squire. There is a donation in the amount of $30.30 from Box Tops for field trips. There's a donation in the amount of $13.51 for art supplies from the Cultural Council. That was their remaining ARPA money that was allocated to them for the Artist and Residents Program. And another in the amount of $1,560 from the PTO for STEM and reading materials. All of these monies will be deposited in the gift account.
Any questions or comments? I'll look for a motion.
Move to accept the donations with gratitude.
I can second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
An update on our search for a Director of Facilities. We interviewed a very well-qualified candidate in the last week. However, we anticipate that salary may be a barrier for this particular candidate. However, there are other candidates, and we are setting up interviews with another applicant, hopefully later this week or early next. MSBA, as a reminder, the MSBA is conducting a statewide survey of school buildings. We are gathering information that they require as part of that process. We will be participating in virtual interviews with them, and then, following those interviews, they will conduct site visits of all of our schools, as well as TCP, because the ACE program is currently housed there. These visits should be completed in late January or early February. Additionally, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, the MSBA is going to begin accepting statements of interest on January 13th. The eligible accelerated repair program projects for the 2025 cycle include roofs, windows, doors, and heat pumps. Based on the monies available for the door replacement project at Turkey Hill, we will not be able to fund replacement of all the doors at Turkey Hill. We can have a conversation at the next school committee meeting after Dr. Gilson and I have an opportunity to attend MSBA's webinar for superintendents on the 21st. We may want to consider putting in a statement of interest to get the rest of those doors funded. We may not, but we'll have additional information for your consideration following that webinar. An update on the 911 phone upgrades, almost complete. The only thing remaining is to fully transition the phone system, and that will happen on January 21st. Power School breach, there was a communication pushed out today. We're going to be receiving additional information from Power School regarding what was accessed for us. Our IT management consultant is also looking at what was accessed, and when we can provide additional information with some details about what was accessed and what does that mean. We will definitely send an updated communication out to the committee and the families as well. A few calendar reminders, January, we are off-cycle the entire month of January. So our next meeting is January 22nd. That will be hybrid from the middle high school at 6:30. Schools and school offices are closed on Monday, January 20th, for the MLK Junior Holiday. Parent-teacher conferences are January 30th at the Turkey Hill and the Primary School. And Term 2 ends this Friday, January 17th. And Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. What questions or comments do the committee members have?
For the Power School breach, you had said you had a meeting, there was a, not a meeting, but there was probably a very large, so was it a system-wide breach?
They serve nationwide, and it was a nationwide, but there are different portals within Power School, and we need to figure out which in our system was accessed and what information is in that portal. There may not be anything of consequence in that portal. We need to get to that level and figure out what's happening. But just know that our IT consultants are also digging while we're waiting to get more detail from Power School. And again, if there's any concerning information that might have been accessed, you know, personal information, we would want to convey to families what that information would be, as well as what does Power School intend to do next?
To mitigate the, were they forthcoming during the meeting today? Was it?
I think it was more or less, we know this happened, we're digging in, we are going to communicate with every customer to inform them exactly what was the breach in their district. And they would be in touch in the coming days with each individual district that was impacted.
Okay, and the IT consultants, other districts they serve were also affected?
I didn't ask them if they also are working in other districts that were impacted.
I'm just curious about that, if it was, to make sure it's not us specific or something about the way we're being serviced by Power School or a level of service we're paying for or something like that, and make sure other districts were affected too.
Yep. So once I have more information, either from our consultants or from Power School, I'll provide everybody an update.
Okay, I guess I'd feel better if it happened to many other districts.
Yeah, that was not a pleasant email to open. Nope.
Other questions or comments from the committee members?
Will the Facilities and Grounds Report include some detail in terms of what happened with the funding and ARPA and that sort of thing?
When we get to that part, we can speak to all that. Yep.
Okay.
For the Facilities Director position, are we confident that we're going to be able to fill that position as it is at this point? Or should it be looked at whether to divide the position or look at increasing the salary?
So we have, when we have had a highly qualified, like, if you have a background in engineering, you are a highly qualified candidate to understand all of our systems. When we have somebody with that level of qualification and experience, we have a little pocket of money within the salary line that we could apply and increase the salary for that position above what is in the budgeted line right now. That said, not every candidate, even one that we would hire, is going to come to the table with that level of background expertise or experience. So we're being selective on that. We don't want to put out a high salary for someone that can't, you know, rise to that level of service for the district. We have had conversations about, and we are pursuing a conversation on Friday. When we put the bid out for the Turkey Hill study, many of the packets that were submitted included experience providing house doctor services. So we are going to be meeting with the folks who actually won the bid, because they were one that included this house doctor service. And we're curious about what service does that encompass? If, if we could lean on them for higher-level portions of the job, like a 10-year facilities plan being drafted out or, you know, development of a detailed capital plan and all of the work that has to go into getting some decent numbers to put on that capital plan, or acting as the project manager for any capital projects that are funded. If that's the kind of service that they provide, then it might be a good thing for us to contract service for those types of things, because that's not a day-to-day sort of thing that's a need. But we still need somebody who's capable of the day-to-day running and managing the facility and the grounds. And it's a big job. A few months ago, maybe two postings ago, we interviewed a candidate who stopped us as we were answering his question about what are the responsibilities of the job? And he stopped us and said, "You're describing two jobs." And I said, "Yes, we are." He said, "That's not doable. You need two people." He said, "I am not the person for this position as it is. If you revamp the position and create two positions from it, please do reach out. I would be interested in applying at that time." So it is a significant challenge, because it is a giant job for the school department. However, like I said, we have an applicant that we think absolutely has great potential, because they have experience in a municipal school department, facilities department currently, but not as the director level, more the next step down as a manager. But if you've worked for a number of years under a really good director, you might be ready to make that jump. So we'll see. There, I feel good that there's a candidate that does show some promise, but we'll know more after we go through an interview process with that candidate. And the first candidate hasn't gotten back to us and fully declined the position. So we're constantly in flux and getting ready for, we've got to move to a Plan B, because this is becoming a very difficult position to fill as a single position. So we may have to come back with a redesign of the department. Stay tuned.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business action item, LHS Scholarship Donation.
I would like to introduce George Weichert. He's a former alum of the Lunenburg Public Schools, and he has donated $15,000 in the amount of a scholarship award to honor one of his former teachers, Mr. Vincent Joseph. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to George, and I thank him for his thoughtful gift to Lunenburg. And if you can unmute, that would be perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, perfect.
Ah, okay. Good evening, Dr. Burnham, everybody else. Dr. Gilson, thank you very much. Just short and sweet, this is the second of two scholarships. The other one, you're quite aware of, the Pete Lincoln. Very different in focus in the sense that that's somebody who's going to liberal arts, maybe following his footsteps. This one is to an athlete that obviously is pursuing college, much in the line of Vincent Joseph. Grew up in Lemonster, had no money. Had he not been picked up by Bridgewater, there was no money. They took him on one semester. He ended up turning that into four. He ended up turning it into a teacher's degree, and he was just an incredible advisor to our class, but a great, great teacher out of the Lunenburg system. So thank you all for your time. Dr. Gilson can kind of take it from here, but thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your generous gift.
Thank you for your donation. Much appreciated. Any other discussion, comments?
So yes, first of all, I was not a student in Mr. Lincoln's classroom, but I was a student in the school where Mr. Lincoln taught. I never had the privilege of having him in class, but I've gotten to know him a lot over the years. As you know, he's very active in Lunenburg. And he was not only an exceptional teacher, but is also an exceptional member of our community. And as a result of that, I did not have the privilege of knowing Mr. Joseph. It was a little bit before my time, but I can only imagine what an exceptional mentor and teacher he was. So I want to take the opportunity to thank you for both of your donations and honoring both of these outstanding contributors to our community. More personal than even that for me, my daughter was actually an awardee of the Lincoln Scholarship four years ago. And she attended Salem State and then Suffolk and is now a graduate student at Pace University in New York, studying playwriting and intends to be an educator. So thank you.
She was, in fact, our first recipient. And not that I don't want to waste any more of your time, but when you see a guy like Pete Lincoln out in the hallway every morning, hugging everybody, it didn't need to be an honor student, it didn't need to be, you know, an exceptional English person. He hugged those kids that came in late, smelled a little bit like alcohol, maybe a little bit of weed. I can tell you, it's probably the only hug those guys got. And he would grab them, do a noogie on their head, and you would see it day after day. And that's what impressed me. I had him twice, and I would look out, and he was always in the hall talking to people. And the same type of person with Vincent Joseph. But yes, your daughter was the first recipient of that award, as a matter of fact.
Any other discussion?
Thank you so much for this. This was very generous and fantastic. Thank you so much.
And I would agree. We thank you very much for your generosity, and your gift will touch many children. So thank you.
Well, thanks. I'm going to go ahead and sign off, but Liz Peterson can talk to Dr. Burnham. I do want to follow up in the spring. Liz has got a pretty good idea of that, and so does Dr. Gilson, on another thing that I'm thinking about doing. But I've got to sign off. We're getting ready to have a winter blizzard here in Atlanta, Georgia. I made a decision about 20 minutes ago. We're going to go ahead and close down at noon tomorrow. I have 189 workers in my plant, and I don't need anybody on the road late tomorrow afternoon or certainly on Friday. So I'm going to go ahead and bid off and wish you all well and Happy New Year.
Be safe, stay warm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
I would move to accept the generous offer of $15,000 for a scholarship in the name of Mr. Vincent Joseph.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is action item, transportation contracts.
Okay. You have a packet in your folder which basically describes all of the increases in the transportation bid. You were notified last week that on first glance at the bid, it came in at 10% for the first year of an increase. I got on the phone with Bob D., and we looked at ways that we could spread out the impact of this bid across the span of the contract. I will say, this is where we landed as of this morning, with the first year being 6.76%, next year 8%, and following year, the third year is 3%. I was talking with him at the latest around 4 o'clock this afternoon, and we're trying to work out a little bit more consistency so we don't go up to 8 and then down to 3%. So, a little bit more stability is what we're looking for before we ultimately settle in on the number and award the bid. So, that's what we're working on.
Do you need action on this tonight? Or can we table this for another evening if you think there could be a change in percents?
I think that there might be some action tomorrow. However, I'd like to keep in mind that it takes, I have to post tomorrow in the central register to get it out by next week. So, can we take action based on the fact that it could stand where it stands now? But it's possible there might be a change, and I would notify you of that change if I get one tomorrow.
Peter?
Could you explain the process? Like, because I understand we put out a bid for a three-year contract.
Yes.
You have been effectively negotiating a five-year contract. Do we now need to rebid this? Is that what you're describing?
No. I put out an option to create a three-year bid request with a two-year extension.
Okay.
Which means we're not obligated to the five-year package. But if it bears to be an advantage to us, then we could continue after the third year is up and at the rates that they specified as part of the 3 plus 2 bid.
So, the plus 2 represents basically an option to extend?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Are those rates guaranteed?
Yes, with those rates guaranteed, which I think could be very important. And if not, we're not obligated to accept. We can just simply, after three years, rebid it out, which most likely, it would be the one bidder that we've continued to have, which is DBUS. And so, you know, it anchors us in either way. I mean, there's no fail. It's not a fail option here. And if they can do right by us, then that's really a good place to work with.
For the public watching at home, over the five years, the increase, the first year is 6.76%, second year is 8.09%, third year is 3.07%, fourth year is 6.91%, and the fifth year would be 8.0%. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Arshinbo?
First, I would like to thank you for working on this and working with DBUS and trying to get it a little bit more even. I appreciate. I know that's extra, extra stuff, and I appreciate that. So, I think if we were to motion that we accept the bid from DBUS because we know that's the only bid we're going to get, even if we put it out again, we would accept that and encourage further negotiation to even out the values than...
Would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I will make that motion to accept this bid from DBUS with the caveat that we would authorize Dr. Gilson to continue to work out a more even spread over the first three years.
Can I? I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. I'm not good at this.
You're very good at this. Again, I want to go back to process. I mean, you said you need to post in the public register. What do you need to post?
We, I need to post the awarding of the bid to DBUS.
Okay.
Okay? But I also, before you bid out anything, or a certain amount, you have to post in the central register for it to be advertised to all of the eligible bidders. You have local businesses that all read this central register.
Yeah, but we're, we've already posted, we've already made the invitation to bid. This is posting the award.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, what is not posting it costs?
No, it's not the...
It doesn't cost.
What I'm getting to here is, I don't want to accept anything that we might be able to get a better deal. So, my, what I would recommend is that we authorize Dr. Gilson to settle the contract for a vote. And we can vote to validate or approve that contract at a later meeting, but we authorize her to negotiate and settle on our behalf, specific to this contract.
Would that be sufficient enough for you, Dr. Gilson?
Yes, I think so.
But I don't want to, I guess the difference that I have in terms of what you, your motion, was that I don't want to accept anything specific with any specific numbers or language at this point. I'd rather empower our agent, in this case, Dr. Gilson, to negotiate our behalf.
Ms. Arshinbo, would you like to revise or withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my motion and hand it over to my friend, Mr. Beardmore.
Okay. I move that we authorize Dr. Gilson to negotiate and finalize this contract.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Gilson. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion on the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Plans. So, we had a meeting on Monday, and the plans are definitely coming along, getting closer. The architect met with us for the second time now with a revised plan and layout. Michael Ray Jeffries, who is the chair of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, stated in that meeting that he was planning on meeting with department heads on Wednesday, Wednesday morning. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Burnham to discuss that.
He did meet with department heads this morning in this very room and solicited their feedback on the design that was provided. We are one of the departments that was able to provide feedback. Liz Peterson is sharing the screen so that everyone can see what that design plan looks like at this time. So, Liz, if you could scroll. Yep. I think if you can go back, back one. Okay. One too far. Okay.
That's the one.
So, the areas that you can see in blue, that's the existing Ritter building. With, on the far right-hand side, that's where the main entrance of that building is. The area that you can see, that's purple and green with some yellow, that would be the town department offices. Liz, you can go to the next screen. This just indicates that we would have both the upper level and the lower level of the existing Ritter building. Next screen. They have mapped out offices and provided assignments to those offices and spaces. I met, Mr. Jeffries sent these drawings out by email Monday evening at approximately 10:50 PM. I met with my team on Tuesday morning, and we took a look at this and started to discuss what we would provide for feedback. In this particular slide, you can see that the entire lower level of the Ritter is dedicated to the ACE program. There's a counter, a reception counter, with the executive assistant sitting out at the counter. It is not appropriate at all that Liz Peterson be the person at the counter to welcome everyone that comes into the building. Not appropriate.
We don't currently have that position.
Say that again?
We don't currently really have that position.
We do. She is my executive assistant.
No, no, a greeter.
At the TCP, we do not have someone.
Correct. Although we do have now a senior doing some hours greeting people at TCP for the Senior Tax Work Program.
Good deal.
Yep. You can see that there's a dedicated Title I office, a dedicated data office. The data office, for those of you familiar with, you know, the staff at Central Office, that would be Heidi Spinney. She's also accounts payable. The Title I office, we have two coaches. I don't, I can't say definitively because there's no square footage provided, but I'm not sure that we would be able to fit the two of them into that office. We would not, there's no space designated for Penny Borneman, who is HR support for the HR office, nor Deb Arrow, who is our central registrar currently. When people register their children for Lunenburg Public Schools, they come and they meet with Deb Arrow. They bring paperwork that is necessary. Copies of these documents have to be made. We need to see original documents in some cases. Most of the time, the children are coming along with the parent for this process. And this is not a process that takes three minutes at a transaction counter. Deb actually sits with these families and provides them information, answers their questions, reviews the paperwork, makes the copies, gets them back the originals that they need. It's a process. And there's no dedicated space for that position at all right now, but she would need space not at a transaction counter in order to do that job. The elevator is the existing lift. It's not truly an elevator.
They're going to change that.
No.
No, they're not.
There will not be a full elevator.
There hasn't been a decision on it yet.
I thought he said that.
Well, Mr. Jeffries informed us this morning that there will not be a new elevator there.
They don't want to spend money on it.
Liz, if you can go to the next screen, and then we may come back to this screen. On the second floor, you can see that there's a dedicated space for special services, records, storage, an office that would house the two administrative assistants for special ed, an office for the director of special services, an office that would be shared by the director of food services and the director of facilities, an office for the director of teaching and learning, and an office for HR. We don't necessarily agree of the placement of all of those things, but the space is there.
I think that was the idea, what Michael Ray is hoping to get that feedback of adjacencies.
Yep, yep. I mean, we could certainly talk about where we would prefer to locate people.
Sure.
Okay. So, we started to discuss some of the challenges. Liz, if you go back to the previous... All right, so if you're familiar with the Ritter, it's an open stairway that you go down to the lower level. Currently, there's no door. So, all of that area where the students are is open. We would not be able to secure it.
It would have to be secured.
Right? Even if it were secured, if they built a door, there's still the lift that can take you right down there. So, there was discussion this morning about that could be sort of keyed so that, you know, somebody couldn't just walk in and use that elevator. My team had a discussion, and I'd invite Juliana Hanscom to come up to the table with Dr. Gilson. Based on experience, perception is important. It's a concern that special needs students would be located in the basement. I know that the whole space is going to be fully renovated, and it's not truly a basement. It's a split level, and it's mostly below ground. But there aren't a lot of windows down in that space. Juliana can speak more to, you know, past history and concerns about what could happen if there were concern raised around the placement of the students in this location. Juliana?
Right, so while I appreciate the thought that went into the space, I think Kate already brought up some of the concerns about it being completely open, going down the stairways and having that, and not having the dimensions of the other rooms we had talked about. Like, next year, we're going to have 10 students in ACE. So, when we figured out, looking at the diagram, even those two offices were like 10 feet, maybe by 10 feet. And when you actually map out 10 feet by, it's not that big. So, when you think about putting desks in there with students and even having the open area. So, that alone has some potential problems as far as not being big enough, really even. But from what Kate talked about, being in that lower level, I can tell you that even when we were building the high school, we had to submit, was it three times, Tim, it went back and forth, to even have a co-located achieve and TLC room together. DESI, when they come out and do the audits of the buildings, do not like to see clusters of programs together, nor do they like to see them in, like, winged areas, so to speak. So, they want, they want to make sure that it is space that is, for lack of a better word, that's equitable, right, for everyone. So, I think that there could potentially be a problem with it being located in the lowest level of the building, even though I know in the past it was used as a child's library, even though it will be renovated. It's just something from my experience in this field that it could potentially be an issue when they come to audit it. And in that case, they don't give you much time to rectify that, and there's really no appeals process in that it needs to be moved and within a very short timeframe. So, it's just things to consider. And I'm not saying that it would definitely happen. It's just something that could, it needs to be thought about.
Is there any precedent?
Is what?
Is there any precedent to that?
Not in Lunenburg, no.
Well, no, but you're talking about a DESI audit. Has DESI done this, if they forced systems to relocate programs such as ACE?
Well, I know that they have, they're very clear when they come in to do an audit on what they don't want to see. And so, it hasn't been in a district that... And so it hasn't been in a district that I've worked in where that's been an issue or a concern. Because it hasn't been the configuration. I just know that it is something that they talk about. And like I said, when we were building the middle high school, we even had problems with where we wanted to locate the classes. And I want to say, Tim, I don't know if you, but I want to say, I think there was even something at the primary school years ago when we had clusters of rooms in one of the sections where they, we had to re, we had to move the classes around, I believe, at the primary school, too. And again, it all depends on who you get that's going to be coming and doing the audit, too. Right? But like I said, it was just something that I just wanted to put on everybody's radar when they're doing this. And like I said, I appreciate the fact that it looks like a significant space, right? But in reality, when we were looking at it, I'm thinking, ah, 10 by 10, and you've got 10 students next year.
That's one student.
Hmm?
Yeah, that's...
The dimensions not being included on the diagram was a question for us. We can't say for sure if we have enough space because we're not exactly sure how big the space is. But it was also a concern that was mentioned by other department heads relative to their spaces at the meeting this morning. So I think that there's an intention that that information would be gathered and provided. So we can certainly take a look at that once that information is available. Liz, if you go back to the second floor. So there's a dedicated space for special services storage, so all of our student record files for special ed, which is great. The problem is there's no place for active employee files, which we are in and out of daily. So to have those records located off-site would significantly hamper the HR office in doing their work. So I'm not, not sure, again. It may depend on the square footage of the office space. We may be able to move files into those office spaces, and it may not be an issue. We won't know until we have more information on the size of the spaces that we're talking about. For the space on the lower level, for the ACE program, there is going to be a bathroom built into the ACE kitchen. And I need to get more clarification as to whether or not the boxed-off area in the other corner of the ACE kitchen is where we can locate a washer dryer because we will need to have that in that space as well. There's no space for IT that we would have to house IT somewhere else in one of the schools. And that's fine, that can work. There's, if we reassign the Title I office and move our data accounts payable person into that space, and if we were to move Liz Peterson into the data space, we still need space for the two other secretaries. And the HR office, I mean, the teaching and learning office is not going to be big enough to house the two specialists, the coaches that we have now. So they would have to be located in one of the schools. I think, I think that that hits the highlights of some of the concerns. You know, it really is going to come down to the details and what we know of the actual square footage of the space and what we can do. I can say that if the spaces are approximately 100 square feet, 10 by 10, we, as a department, will incur some cost for furniture. The furniture that we have currently is too big a scale for a space that small. So just to be aware, at some point, if this move, if this is the plan and this moves forward and we are moving in, there will be some additional cost for our department to find furniture that could fit the space. I did mention this morning that that space where they have the transaction counter, where they originally thought Liz Peterson would be positioned, whether or not we could actually build out a couple of offices in that space and meet code. I don't, I don't know if there's something that would prohibit that. It might be possible and doable. we can probably make it work. One of the things that's important as well, as part of the plan, it was intentional that there be no conference spaces in this building. We currently spend a good chunk of our day in our conference space, which is our curriculum office. We have district leadership meetings, instructional leadership meetings. We have meetings with teachers. We have meetings with coaches. We would occupy a lot of time over here in this building because this building will be converted to meeting spaces, conference rooms. We would book out an awful lot of time over here. Not ideal.
It's going to cost us a lot of extra money and wasted time coming over here for meetings.
Again, not ideal. I would want to share some information that was relayed to the department heads this morning. Mr. Jeffries indicated that the ACE program being located there was temporary because they won't be there permanently.
Oh.
And that was news to me.
Where will Mr. Jeffries be relocating the ACE program?
They will go in a future school. Again, the special ed offices, our special services offices have to be co-located with this program because our director of special services is the administrator of record with the Department of Ed for this program.
And you work closely with the director, so you're...
Right, so if ACE had to move out because town offices needed more space to expand and they could go into another school, the special ed offices would have to go as well. I did talk about the concern for the security because there were students in the building, and their intention was no, that it was meant for open access. In other words, we would not have a door that would separate the school department from the town offices. Again, that means public can enter and access from the town office side of the building and then come into the school department.
Yeah, there was discussion at our meeting on Monday about a door on that left side. And then I would assume that you'd have to put a door on the right side as well.
And a lock on the lift.
The building is going to be conducted such that there's a throughway through the second, what is currently the second floor?
Both floors.
There'll be a throughway on the, yeah, both floors at this point, this iteration. And again, this was the idea of the department meeting to get a lot of the feedback because there was even Laura brought up at the meeting that some rooms don't even have windows, and there's some storage that have windows.
The vaults and the record rooms have windows, but the Parks and Recs Department and the Conservation Commissioner office don't have windows. And those are the two offices you'd think would really want windows. Like, those are the two people who want to look at the windows.
So one of the other things that other department heads offered relative to their spaces, some of them seemed to indicate that it was not going to be adequate space. Some of them also indicated that there's no receiving waiting area. Where do people go when they're waiting for the person they're coming to meet with to be available? There were some that indicated they needed more space and essentially indicated they needed Ritter building space.
Was this, was this design done? Did you talk to the architects before they laid out your offices?
No.
So this is the idea of the process, that we're getting the feedback, we're giving the feedback. Hopefully, we can give the feedback to the committee and the architects, and they can re-vamp.
Why are we doing this middleman? Why are we doing this with a middleman? Why can we have Dr. Burnham just meet with the architect?
That's a possibility.
To lay out the offices for the school department? Why meet with the middleman who keeps showing designs and saying, okay, how about now?
Yeah, I think the idea of the feedback is if the feedback is not accepted, then it's not going to go well in the community vote.
So I have a couple of thoughts here. First, let's put this in the context of what has happened and what is likely to happen or not happen in the future if this doesn't go. We had the perfect plan that served everybody's needs, and it was unworkable financially. And if we pursue the perfect plan again that meets everybody's needs, it will be more unworkable than it was four years ago when it wasn't workable. Because everything is more expensive, and our ability to address these things financially has not scaled with inflation or the cost of buildings or anything like that. This is not going to be a perfect solution. But the alternative is to keep doing it the way we're doing it in a building that is imploding. So there is no perfect here, right? Where we are going to land is going to be imperfect. Hopefully, it will be better on the whole than it is today, but it won't be perfect. And I, you know, we have to be thinking of it that way. I am far more concerned about, honestly, the public roaming through our office space and with close proximity to students than I am our staff having to come here for a meeting. I see my boss once a week, and we talk three times a day. We have the technology. But I, but I'm very concerned about the workability of the space, the security of the space. I think we had this conversation four years ago about the ACE program and the economics of the ACE program. I think that we need to be level set there as well again, right? Like, there's a carrying cost associated with ACE that we might not be able to afford. And maybe we need to look at alternatives there if the proposed solution is not workable. But not finding a way to make this work, in my view, is not an option. We, you know, our primary goal has got to be to find a way to make this work. And to do it within a financial envelope, not necessarily a physical envelope that meets the outline here, but within a reasonable financial envelope. So I think we continue to work with them to figure out these issues. But in my mind, we're a long way from we don't want to play, right? Like, we want to play. We want to figure out how to make this thing work.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think it's really important to send the committee in feedback on what's not working, but also recommendations. Like, okay, can we move it here? Can we have this office here? Can we have this person in front? Can we reorient this person next to this person? Give as much feedback as we can to see if they can improve the design. Because again, this is the second design, and the second design is much better than the first, but it's still a work in progress. The first was scary. It got better. It kept getting better.
Is it possible for the architect to talk directly with our staff instead of...
I'm not sure if that's possible. We could talk to Michael Ray Jeffries.
It just seems really ridiculous to have Michael Ray Jeffries just keep presenting plans for what he thinks the school's department should run like.
Well, I think if we're not being heard...
He thinks it's okay to put special ed kids in the basement. And we keep explaining to him that it is not okay to put special ed kids in the basement.
That is not my position.
It is not okay to put special ed kids in the basement.
This board has not had that discussion formally or formulated an opinion on it.
Okay.
My position is, right now, it is okay.
It is not okay.
So I think, you know, if that is a...
It is fundamentally not okay.
If that is a serious problem, then we need to have that out sooner rather than later with the entire board and a full hearing of the issues. Because as far as I'm concerned, that is the path that we are on, and that is the most reasonable path.
There is a long history in this country of shoving special ed kids in basements in undesirable locations, and that's what we're doing here.
I understand. I sat in that children's library for hundreds of hours.
You were not a special ed kid, and you had the choice to leave the library. That was not your school.
I think we should have this specific discussion as an agenda topic that has the right information laid out in front of us. And I'm not saying it won't change my mind, but the path that we're on, that we have spent tens of thousands of dollars on, has been, the premise of that has been that that is the plan for the ACE program. And nobody on this committee, to my knowledge, has formally or publicly objected to that.
I have.
And we can provide feedback. That is the feedback from our special ed director as well. We'll provide that feedback to the committee of our concerns. Any other discussion on the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee plans? All right, seeing none. Next discussion we have is the 2025-2026 school calendar.
So you have a draft of a calendar for next school year. No action needs to be taken on that this evening. We just wanted to provide it to the committee and share it publicly so that there's another opportunity for folks to review, ask questions, or catch mistakes, or make recommendations.
Any questions or comments on the calendar?
How many PD days are on this? It feels like less. I didn't...
There, there are three full days that staff are in the buildings without students. One is the day before school opens. And then there are two full professional development days. One, we, for many years at this point, have had on the November election day because many districts do, and we can share resources and provide better opportunities and options for staff for professional development. And then there are two early release professional development days.
Did we historically used to have more? Not during my time here.
We don't have an election this year, though, right?
In November, is that what you said?
I wouldn't think we'd...
Yeah, it's an off-year.
I think it's an off-year.
My only thought is maybe we connect that PD day to Veterans Day and do a five-day week and a three-day week or something along those lines and give our families the opportunity for an actual long weekend.
Can we talk to North Middlesex, too? Because I know that we usually share with North Middlesex and save a lot of cost on PD training. I don't know if they've set their calendar yet. And if we could maybe also talk them into doing the 10th, then we can get a long weekend and save costs.
I don't know what it saves, but it just, to me, four days of a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, four weeks, two weeks of a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday just seems a little...
And then Thanksgiving.
It's not uncommon in November.
No, November is like that, but, you know, I see your point.
Or find another place to stick that PD there. I just, I think we have flexibility because it's not... I just, I think we have flexibility because it's not an election year.
But will we team with another district?
No, I get it. Yeah, yeah, I get it.
We got to do what they.
We don't have.
Have the discussion.
But it does, does it save us? I mean, it saved us.
Yeah, we had a keynote speaker that we paid half price for.
Yep, it was great.
Is the November 4th planned with North Middlesex?
We've been working with them on the November day for several years. There was, I think, last year, we did not. But prior years, even in the COVID year, we collaborated with them for a full online conference.
Do they have the state set November 4th?
I, I can double check with them and find out.
And then teachers can have their.
Because my, my opinion is if they have it set on November 4th, I would want to keep it.
And I'd stay with it.
But maybe we can see if they also want to do a long weekend and.
I think it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, I think you can have that discussion. It is a discussion on our end that the school committee was inquiring about, possible different dates if, if that is a possibility. Any other discussion on the calendar? All right, seeing none. Next item is a, this item is a discussion on revolving accounts, school choice and facilities revolving accounts.
So, you know, in recent meetings, we've been giving you updates on the status of different revolving accounts. And this would close out, an update on revolving accounts as we head into budget presentation at the next meeting. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gilson.
Okay. One of the points we've been trying to make through the Budget Task Force presentations and as we're getting closer to budget is that our revolving account, they do not have, all of them do not have as much incoming revenue. So, the money in is not equalling the expenses that need to go out. And so, this is an illustration on the funding status of the, the choice, which school committee takes a vote on. Right now, for this year, we have five seats open that the school committee approved for school choice for this coming year at the high school. And we receive tuition monies from other districts to support the students that are coming from surrounding students. This graph was kind of riveting to me. And it, what it did is, it was on the DESI website in the fiscal area. I pulled it off. If you look at the, the blue graph bars that go across, the blue graph bars basically explain students that are, that Lunenburg is receiving. And if you, like in FY15, we were receiving 38.9s. Well, I don't know how you receive 0.9 of a student, but that's what it worked out to be. And so, going up through the different fiscal years, you see the blue graph bar shrinking with the student numbers, okay? And so, you know, in, in FY24, the tuition that we were receiving is $94,000. For each student that we have, it's about $5,700 that we receive in incoming funds throughout the year. And so, basically, our, if you look at the blue, blue graph lines, you see that the status, since it's directly impacting our choice revolving accounts, that's not as much revenue going in because we have not opened up as many seats for school choice. And school choice is, basically, it's, you don't have to participate in school choice. There were some districts that choose not to. I came from a district that did not make the choice to participate in school choice. But it is a way of generating additional revenues. So, with that, I would, I, I am showing you right now where the status is in the choice revolving account. Choice has been used to pay for bills that come up that aren't necessarily budgeted for in the, in the local fund. If you look at the cash description at the top, which is, I'm trying to circle that. We started with a beginning balance of $167,000 due to unpaid, or basically bills that have come in after the fact to be paid in the last fiscal year. If they come in mid-July or August, we don't, you can't pay those out of your local budget. So, we look to choice to pay them out. And at this time, our ending balance in choice is $150,000. That's not a very big buffer. And I, in talking with the interim town manager, he had, you know, in other districts that he's been in, he's advised to not just depend on these revolving accounts because people don't know what they can't see. And so, as we budget, we're, you know, moving a lot of expenses that we had to pay out of school trust and we're making them visible in the local budget. So, that's where we're going with that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't. So, the, the graph, the red and blue graph, is that school choice? Does that for our sending, does that include charter schools? Or is that just school choice to other?
I'd have to check on that.
I'll ask Mrs. Peterson if she's still on.
And does that include Monty Tech?
No, that's not Monty Tech, that I know.
Monty Tech's a separate budget.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but I'd have to check on that. So, and I can get back to you. So, but it's a great question. So, all the students that are electing to do choice, and we're sending and we're receiving. So, the red is we're sending and the blue is our receiving, districts as are receiving, the students we're receiving. I want to say publicly a thank you to Deb Arrow. She has been on top of this revolving account. She's been assigned to be meticulous with it this year. She's never had that responsibility before. And so, our, she's, she's basically using a program called ML Schedules. And so, she's making sure that everyone that uses our facility gets an invoice. And she's been really good about communicating. And I will say this, one of the, one of the major revenue piece or groups was the, the Bang, the Bengals. I remember being in conversation today and I pronounced it as Bangles. But anyway, so they have, they're, where they are surely, and they're using their turf field. So, we've lost substantial amount for their practices and games and things like that. LISA is continuing to be a main renter of our facilities. And this slide actually reflects a lot of the LISA purchases. And if you look at the bottom number, which right now I can see is very small, but she's, Deb Arrow has literally sent out almost $23,000 in invoices. And this was updated just yesterday. And she's received $21,000 of that, $23,000, $21.5,000 back, which, which is really, it's good, but we lost the football, the youth football somewhat because of their new configuration. So, I also want to show you this Munis. Deb Arrow has not necessarily moved those funds over part yet because she just got them in yesterday. And there's a process for, basically, you have the revenue deposited into the accounts and then it appears in Munis. Right now, the Munis balance, we, you know, we started with a beginning balance of like $4,600. We've used some of that funding to pay for painting the athletic fields. We use it to pay for custodians for events. We use it to pay for all sorts of people we need to hire to work to support the facilities. Even the land, we have landsome landscapers that get the fields ready. And so, right now, without Deb, Deb Arrow's going after those receipts or invoices. Right now, before she makes the deposit, we have an ending balance which is low. It's $1,359. So, there's not a lot that you can pay with for $1,359. And so, we're continuing to really focus on things that are bringing us revenue and trying to get the revenue to come in. And it's a lot of work and it does require several hours of Deb Arrow's time each week because she has to, you know, work with the schedule, work with the organization, get the invoices out and, and then transfer the, collect all the monies, so.
And this was all work that was previously done by the director of facilities, which is why Deb is now handling it because we don't currently.
We don't have.
Have.
Thank you, Deb.
Yeah, so.
And, and just, again, in FYI, even though we've collected the monies and they may be deposited in the bank, it's going to take some time before it shows up in Munis. There seems to be a lag there of.
Like a little bit, like seven weeks.
At least seven weeks, maybe longer.
So, which is a challenge when Munis is the central hub for every single town department to be working with, right? And so, you're not, the information in Munis is only as good as the people processing the funds in Munis. So, it's a lot of work and, you know, kudos to the townspeople, kudos to the school people. But, you know, the, the amount of work and not enough people impacts both sides. And so, that was one of the things that came up at the Budget Task Force. And, you know, for example, I was looking for funding that had been paid from the state in the amount of $31,500 in a grant. And I was trying to find it in a line. I didn't see it until seven weeks later. And Ezekiel and I went through trying to find it. And, because I could see it was paid from the state, but, and it, it, ultimately, it had arrived, but it hadn't gone through to be processed yet, so.
And correct me if there's a more recent update, but even the monies that were voted at special town meeting, the additional Chapter 70 monies, we have not seen that show up in that salary reserve line yet.
Like, so part of me is understanding the lag, okay? But the other piece is we're hesitant to spend money when we don't see the money in the system. And so, so that's been a unique, you know, Ezekiel and I meet every week to talk about what's going on. And I think that that's very, very important because we don't want to miss a dollar.
Does this phenomenon get worse as we make the transition to a cloud version of Munis?
No, it's really much more a function of the actual personnel.
The personnel.
Being able to process everything.
There's just not enough people.
So, switching platforms is not.
Is it, it's personnel at town hall or is it personnel on?
I will tell you, you know, everybody's working at capacity.
Oh, I, I, it's not a, it's not a people, I'm not, it's not anyone's, it's a.
It's, it's, it's a.
It's a number of, only so many hours in the day.
Lack of personnel to be able to manage the capacity to be more efficient. You know, in, like, some, some districts have, like, if there's a centralized hub, they process so efficiently, you can see immediately, but there's a lag. And we are aware of that and, you know, and, and so, we're trying to work together. You know, if we don't see it, we're saying, okay, we, the communication is good.
And, and things have improved.
With Ezekiel and, you know, they're, they're working very well.
Once it came on, he had to get caught up. But there was a time where there was a lag of at least three months. So, and I think I advised the committee during the year last year. It, it's difficult because we, we don't know what the actual number is because it's not reflecting the true status because the revenues haven't been deposited in the account.
My understanding, when we had this discussion mid to late year last year, I think we even had an executive session around this or something because of some of the sensitivities. The, there were, there were two issues that I understood were contributing to the, the processing delays and inefficiencies. One was we didn't have enough people, we had vacancies, we weren't staffed right. And the second was that Munis was falling apart, for lack of a better description. Fast forward to now, nine or 10 months later. My understanding is, is that the staffing situation is a little bit better than it was. Maybe that's inaccurate, but I'd, I'd like to know. But we've, and, and Munis is more stable than it was nine or 10 months ago. But we've made a decision to make a, a migration to a hosted version of Munis, which I think is the right decision. My, my question is, do we think this is going to get better as a result of?
Cloud-based?
You know, fewer vacancies, a, a stable platform that isn't eating time, like tho- those kinds of issues.
So, since February, I think they have filled all of their finance positions at town. So, it's been almost a year that they have been at, all their positions filled. It really is a function, and I think the town manager will be able to speak to this, you know, as he's talking through budget season. There, there aren't enough staff, right? There was an improvement with the stability of Munis once Susar IT started to address some server issues. It's still going to be an even better improvement once we go cloud-based for Munis. So, there have been some improvements, you know, from a year ago this fall when there was nobody up there and Munis was crashing daily and down for hours at a time daily. So, there has been improvement. But this kind of lag, unless there are more hands processing to enter this information into Munis, there, there's going to be, there's going to be a lag. And it just makes it a challenge. I mean, if it's going into budget lines, the, the new process is they do not want the budget lines to be in deficit. And you remedy with a line item transfer later. They want you to move the line item transfer and then go ahead. The challenge there is getting all of those transfers registered in Munis also is not happening quickly. So, there's a lag in our ability to pay invoices.
But, but this goes back to an issue that we touched upon a few meetings ago when this came up. And, and I don't know that, and I understand that we're potentially treading on something that is very controversial. But we control our budget by statute. We are in partnership with the town when it comes to the operational end of this. But to my knowledge, there isn't a policy or an agreement or anything that has been co-endorsed by the select board or the school committee that says that we, you know, like, in my mind, we could pull the plug and run our own instance of, of Munis and do it by ourselves if we so choo- chose. And so, when somebody makes a decision that is not us, that says you're not going to run an account in deficit and as a result of that, that's going to cause an inefficiency. And we're not the ones making that decision, then in my, or, or even being consulted, then that's problematic to me. And, and I, that's one example, but you're touching upon a number of different examples that I feel like our authority is, is, is being encumbered a little bit here. And I, I, you know, I, I don't mean, like, we got enough to deal with without picking a fight when it comes, but, but at the same time, why, why can't Susan run an account in deficit knowing that we're going to deal with it in a week and a half? I mean, to me, and, and if it costs us five more minutes on the part of Susan, then that is, we don't have that kind of time.
Susan doesn't want to run any accounts in deficit.
No, ideally, we don't. But when we can't process payment on an invoice.
As a practical matter, you need to do business.
Because we go into deficit and we can't, and we know that we've put the money there, but it's not showing up yet. That's the challenge. And there's been a lot of talk through the work of the Budget Committee and the community around sharing resources. This is a shared resource. It's not working out perfectly for us.
But, but Dr. Burnham, you just touched on it, right? Which is, when you make a decision to partner with somebody and share resources, there needs to be equal skin on the game, in the game, on both sides in terms of how decisions are made and what is the path that we're gonna go on to go forward, and what the costs are associated with those decisions. Because we are encumbering costs a, as well as maybe not making the best decisions because we don't have the visibility that we think we are owed when it comes to our financial accounts. And I, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're in the process of, of going through some leadership changes in, in, in town. Like, the, these are the topics where, you know, we should be having discussions with potential town managers about how do you resolve these issues? How do you, how do you define how, what are the rules that we're gonna play by, right?
And I.
Right now, I feel like, okay, we keep getting these issues, and yes, we need to make some decisions on the revenue side because the trends are what they are, right? Like, you can look at the long-term trends and say, all right, well, we're gonna run out of money. But in the short term, we're spending a lot of time figuring out how to, how to manage cash that we shouldn't be spending.
Right. And I, I just, and I'll let Dr. Gilson, uh, share her thoughts on it. Um, Mr. Ayala has been really good to work with. He's trying to be cautious and do things the way they should be done. He recognizes the challenges and if we were in a real crisis situation, gotta, gotta pay this bill, I have no doubt that he would work with us and we would remedy the situation. Um, I think both Dr. Gilson, myself, and Mr. Ayala are trying to get things operationally the way they should be. It's just, there's not enough people, people.
Yeah.
To really process.
And that's really, that's really.
Right? I think everybody is doing the very best they can, and they're pushing through as much as they can on a, on a daily basis. There are just so many hours in the day. And, and again, this is a situation, and I, again, it was something that was talked about through the Budget Task Force. This community, um, functions as well as it does, given all of the challenges with revenue. The School Department, I think especially so, because the people are so committed that they're going to do whatever it takes. And if that means that they're sitting in their office until nine PM, that's what's happening. They're not getting paid until nine PM.
Yeah.
But it's, it's the dedication and the commitment to not let the balls drop on the parts of so many employees. And I know that the School Department is not the only department.
Right.
Um, there's a lot of burden on our firefighters in town because of the staffing shortage. Um, if they weren't, if they weren't so committed to Lunenburg and they walked out the door, we would not be functioning at the level that we are. It is truly largely due to the commitment and dedication of the staff in some particular key roles especially.
I, I don't want to belabor this, and I, I know we want to get to the revenue side of this.
Mm-hmm.
Are, are you, Dr. Burnham and you, Dr. Gilson, sufficiently convinced that these are not issues that we can point automation to, right? Like, you're talking about a lot of manual work that in, in, like, it never ceases to amaze me in my professional world how the things that you thought would never be automated, all of a sudden are. Um, and I, you know, I know that there's a lot of, a lot of development in the way of municipal management systems and those kinds of things. Like, is there any hope that some of these things become better automated as a result of a transition to Munis Cloud or something like that?
Yeah. And I think, you know, I, I think on the town side, they're talking about payroll being sort of outsourced. Um, uh, again, it's the investment to get to that. And when we're resource challenged the way we are, it takes longer to get to something that can actually free people up to do other things because it's automated.
There's a new program, um, that's used to pay officials and it's called Arbiter Pay, right? And so basically, um, we recommend like a large payment, um, and we wirelessly transfer it to account, um, with the Arbiter Pay Company. Um, whereas we used to have to process like individual, um, time sheets for every single coach that worked at every single game. That is crazy.
Every single official.
And inefficient, right?
And we had a discussion about moving to Arbiter Pay more than a year ago. We had the discussion once Mr. Ayala came on board and he was open to it. And this is how it happened.
So we have done it.
Right? So it's partly, you know, people being willing to look at things being done a different way and prioritizing the efficiency and freeing up employees to do other things to move in that direction. But you've got to make some investment and you've got to have, you know, e- either superintendents or, or town managers that are.
Receptive to that.
Willing to make.
And make the leap.
Commitment of funds because we're going to put ourselves in a better position.
Right. And, but along with those changes, right, we are gonna ha, like, we're meeting as a team shortly on the twenty-third to talk about the process for Arbiter Pay, um, together in terms of how it's working on the school side and how we're not duplicating efforts in our process. So we're going back to say, okay, we have this amount of time and how can we look at making things more efficient?
Right. Because the officials, um, are actually getting paid in a much more timely way. Previously, it might have been more than three months before they saw payment from a game that they officiated. And there were some that were telling our athletic director.
That they were gonna leave.
That they were not gonna officiate here anymore if, if they couldn't get paid. So we appreciate Town Hall working with us.
We do.
And, and allowing us to, and facilitating this move to be able to, to work in this way. Um.
So that's better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're gonna have a follow-up meeting.
I'm glad to hear that. Good example.
What's turnaround now for it? Is it reasonable and we're good?
Um, well, we're a whole lot better than we were.
We're better than we were.
Better than three months, right?
I don't, I don't know if it's a two, three-week turnaround time.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, we can get some information.
Yeah. Is this something that we want to put on the agenda for a future meeting to get another update?
Uh, just general, uh, finance partnership or specifically Arbiter, Arbiter Pay?
I'm not overly concerned about Arbiter Pay. I am concerned about a general move toward automation and efficiency, right?
I'm concerned about people not getting paid, anyone young.
It's about not only people, but it's about adding the training into their schedules so that they can learn how to do the automation and be efficient.
It's absolutely an investment, yeah. It is absolutely.
So it's investment in people and training.
Right.
But the, in my experience professionally, when it comes to doing things like booking travel or getting expenses paid or whatever, the more you automate, the more, the quicker I get paid, right, in, in, in that circumstance, right? Like, that is generally the result.
Right.
And, you know, it's some poor administrator who is having to audit receipts and those kinds of things. Oh, as it turns out, AI will do that for you, right? Like, those kinds of things. Like, and, and meanwhile, we're arguing about office space for people that theoretically, we don't want to have to hire more people to do this work when we can, we can automate some of it.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion on this? All right, we'll keep moving along. Uh, next item on the agenda is Old Business Action Item Facilities and Grounds Report.
Okay. I have had a lot of fun with this. Um, that is.
Maybe we should be concerned.
All right. So I will say this, um, you know, two really critical projects for Turkey Hill, um, we bid out in December. Uh, we talked last December, um, at the, I think it was a December fourth meeting, um, on how the fire alarm upgrade came in at a much higher price because of the fact that, um, if we're going to have to redo, we were expecting to redo components, but because there was an, we were on, with a horn strobe system and the new code requirement for any new work requires a voice, um, a voice evacuation sound to go in the fire alarm, uh, upgrade. So we also talked about, um, you know, like the American Service Company came in with the lowest bid, and that was a three hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And we asked for a deduct. And, um, I talked to Chief Sullivan about whether or not he would anticipate that we needed the emergency responder radio amplification system. Um, he did not think we would. So basically, one of the things that I did was I expedited the timeline. I worked with the people at the company. Um, the, um, the, the, um, chief person from the American Service Company actually drove to my house and hand-delivered the signed contract before, I didn't tell you about that yet, but they did. Um, and, because I wanted it to have in hand, Kate and I had talked to Carter, um, Terenzini, about the possibility. We talked about ARPA funds and whether or not there would be any more ARPA funds that we could apply to this project because we had reserved capital funding for both the design and the construction. But we were like, I don't know, sixty thousand dollars short without, um, also, um, you know, monies to have the onsite engineer work with us from NV5. Uh, so, um, Carter did the emergency, or at the Select Board meeting, he requested for dispensation for them to, um, let him make a discretionary, um, basically use of the, of that funding. So he did, um, go through, the, the Select Board voted, um, and, um, Car- Carter and I continued to talk and, and with Dr. Burnham. And so, um, that went in and it was approved. Carter signed the contract. We did receive about seventy-five thousand dollars in ARPA funding. Um, Chief Sullivan also acknowledged the importance of the fire alarm upgrade because it has failed before and you don't want it to fail again when the safety of kids is a priority. Um, so, um, so we're moving along and that is, signed contract is done. The bid award will be posted in the Central Register and, um, the project is expected to be completed by August fifteenth. So that's, um, that's a good thing. Now, the other bid that is become critical is, um, securing doors at Turkey Hill along with security. Uh, because, you know, as much as a fire alarm system, um, gets people out of the building, you don't want an unexpected thing to happen to enter the building. So that bid was, um, received on December twentieth and opened, um, with the exterior door replacement total. The total bid was, um, without the security systems for doors, like fourteen of them, came in at forty se, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So, um, I've been working with the, and that didn't even include a base price for the vestibule, okay? Um, so, and, and I learned that our doors, there is no other school system except for MIT that has those doors still. Um, so, so, um, anyway, um, I've been working with both, there are two contractors involved, one for security and one for doors. And, um, we think we're gonna be able, they, I had them price point what we could afford and that's three hundred thousand dollars, um, that we have remaining in the capital. So, but that will do, security system and only three doors for the three hundred thousand dollars. So, um, you know, so we are most likely gonna award the bid to the group of them because they've been highly responsive. Um, and they're working with us to get us, you know, a little bit more like accustomed to what we need. But we are recognizing that we don't have enough funds. We will, you know, if we proceed with the bid, we will structure it so that Phase One will do the doors that are, uh, in most danger of failing. And so we'll get that done. And we are going to go to the MSBA, um, the, yeah, the webinar in January to see if we can put in for a, um, renovation alternate, what is it? The advanced repair?
Accelerated repair.
Accelerated repair, yeah. So we can write and we can, um, you know, hopefully get on the list for the accelerated repair for the rest of the amount. Um, and so we can keep you posted on that. Um, so that's been a part of what I've been working on. We also are planning to, uh, meet with a team on Friday this week with the architects. Um, for right now, they've prepared drawings in AutoCAD, um, based on their December site visit. They've distributed, um, information, uh, to our people, our engineers that are gonna look at mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems. Um, and they're preparing to schedule an ADA consultant. Uh, I have a file that I'm building with all of the information and everybody will be able to draw from that file. And like, I've had to get an assessed value of Turkey Hill for them. Um, and, um, uh, there are many other things that I've, that I'm learning about that we're putting in the file folder for them to, you know, talk with us about on Friday. Even, um, you know, the AHRRA report and what our latest AHRRA report is, and that's for the asbestos. Um, so they're aware of everything related to asbestos. Um, going along, um, the other funding projects that we received money for, uh, we received money to fund the safety film at, um, the middle high school. They were actively, and they'll probably finish tonight, um, with the project. We got it under contract, um, and, um, I worked with the president of the company and everybody, like, through ten o'clock, I, I think they're gonna be working tonight and it'll be all done. Okay? Um, and the other thing that we were able to secure with ARPA funding was a utility pickup with a plow. Um, and so that went into McGovern. We should have the pickup truck, um, with the plow here sometime in mid to late spring. So they're actually building the truck, putting it together, um, to meet the, um, specifications. So I feel like we actively have been supporting the capital planning projects and accomplishing things to get them done with the right people that can help us. And I'll also circle back. Um, Dr. Burnham mentioned the House Doctor approach and the architecture firm that, um, that Laura, um, helped to, um, select. Um, we, they also are very familiar with the House Doctor approach. So if we do any kind of facilities revision, um, I will be asking her Friday, um, on what their services might be and, and how to provide a little bit more information. So I don't know, we'll, we'll have fun. This is why this is so much fun. There's never like a same day with it.
Never born.
I'm glad you're enjoying it.
[laughing]
Could I ask a, a couple of questions?
Yes, Mr. Gilson.
Um, first of all, before I ask a question, just comments.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm having a great time.
Thank you. The, the work that you have done and the progress that you have made in your short time here, Dr. Gilson, is nothing short of extraordinary. And I could not be more appreciative. Um, it, I, I can't say enough about this because these are, these are projects that are super important to me, particularly the security at Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
And we were stuck for a very long time there. And it feels like we still got some challenges here, but we are less stuck than we've been. And, and I, I sincerely appreciate that. Um, the, the other comment I. The other comment I want to make is, and I thanked him today, I spoke with him briefly on the phone this afternoon, but Mr. Terranzini has been just an extraordinary ally of the school department.
Yes.
And what a breath of fresh air. He has brought a new perspective on things, a willingness to bat ideas around and come up with different solutions and a willingness to work with everybody, including the select board and yourselves, to maximize the benefits and fully expend the available funds for ARPA in ways that are better than I think I certainly anticipated, right up until the month of December. So, just, you know, you have formed an extraordinary team with your, with your, with your, with your folks at Town Hall. And I just, I really appreciate, in particular, both yours and Mr. Terranzini's work on this. Okay, my question.
Yep.
The doors. You just described accepting a bid that would bring us to Phase 1 with the money that we have.
Yes, correct.
Does that then mean that we would need to rebid Phase 2 with some sort of future plan to go and, associated with these MSBA funds or some other funding source?
I think we have to listen at the MB, you know, at the webinar in January to figure out what that would entail. And we're also looking at, you know, with all the projects that are running right now, what, you know, we're going to, we're going to run the ADA study and I think what we're trying to anticipate is what are the next steps? And, I mean, you can't have doors that are not consistent, you know, it's a, it's a problem. It's, you know, so like the fire alarm was a problem, you know, so...
The problem is the commitment to the building, right? It's not so much, it's not so much the availability of the funds and the timeline to go get those funds and matching and like, we can, we can do that work.
Right.
The problem here is, is that we make a commitment that's a, I don't know what the, how they would look at the lifespan of a door, but let's assume for a moment that that's 10 years. Well, we've just committed our future school committees to 10 years in that building, which may be okay.
Yeah.
But then, a year from now, you say, okay, well, add another year and do the heating system. And then a year after that, you say, add another year and do the roof and the solar panels and like, all of a sudden, now we're in that building for not 10 years, but 20 years. And I just, I worry about that.
Right, I do worry about that too.
And that's one of the things that we can try to press them on, to give us some insight as to what level of commitment that is with the lifespan, so on and so forth. But being a little bit realistic.
Everything's going to take time.
Do we really foresee any scenario that we're opening the doors to a brand-new Turkey Hill school in less than 10 years?
The doors are critical.
Depends on who you listen to.
Critical. I, I could manage leaks from the roof.
No, I hear you.
But the doors are critical.
Not with kids in the building.
I hear you.
It's not worth.
But, but, you know, when you're looking at a decision that is not half the cost of, let's say, $500,000, and that's a high end, right? But you're looking at a $250,000 contribution from the state that commits us and puts us, basically makes a decision on our behalf that is multiple millions of dollars in downstream effects, right? Good, bad or indifferent, right? And I, it's, it's very discomforting to, to shackle our successors on this committee, you know, to, you know, we've heard for years that Lunenburg has been penny wise and pound foolish, right? Well, is this a pound foolish?
Yeah, and I think that that's, we need more information at the webinar. That may not be the way we want to go and it may be that we're coming back in the fall with a capital plan.
Plan, yes.
Includes the remainder of the door replacement.
Right.
And the vestibule.
In the fall, we'll have the report from CSS.
And we'll know more.
And we'll know the rejection.
We'll do our research with MSBA and see.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see what that looks like.
So I think we're kind of like midstream, like we're not quite there to make a decision yet on which way. We just need more information and that's coming. Like, there's a plan for that.
Mr. Wazowski?
Does this mean we'll have two concurrent security door systems at Turkey Hill, running at the same time? One on one set of doors and one on the other set of doors?
I'm not going to, like, I, I'm not sure yet. I think...
So not, they're going to have to, if we awarded a bid just for the project on the security access and we weren't replacing the doors, they would have to work with whatever doors were, were in place. So, I don't, I don't foresee us having to run concurrently two separate systems.
Okay.
But we can get more information on that.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's something that will also be a part of the, the security systems. They require like a high voltage something or other. I don't know exactly what it is, to be frank. So there's an electrical contractor that I'm going to walk through the building with to learn about what high voltage needs we have for that. I am going to get the quote and I'm going to see whether it's realistic to either include it in next year's budget or to see if we need to make some, before we award the bid, to see if we need to make some adjustments in what we're going to get for the Phase 1, $300,000 not to exceed, okay?
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
My only comment is thank you so much for doing all of this. I was going to bring up the commitment to the building, but that's been brought up, so I will skip right over it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with all the other committee members and I also appreciate the collaboration with the fire chief and the interim town manager.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I'll look for action to accept the facilities and grounds report.
Motion to accept the facilities and ground report.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is action item class accounts, class of 2005.
Yes, this evening Krista Dymatopoulos is here to make the request for those funds. So I'll turn it over to her now.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Krista Dymatopoulos. I am a member of the class of 2005 and I am formally requesting the transfer of funds from the Lunenburg account into a joint personal account that myself and another class officer would open up.
Any questions or comments?
No, I, I just thank you for stepping up to do that and I assume you have talked to Mrs. Peterson to get the directions on how to do this because I guess it is quite complicated.
Yep, I have been in contact with Liz and she has informed me of kind of the process as to what we need to do in order to get those funds transferred.
Thank you. Thank you for coming too, coming forward. I'll look for a motion.
Thank you.
I will move to allow the transfer of funds from the class of 2005 to the class officers as presented by Ms. Dymatopoulos.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks for sticking with us for two hours.
Yeah, jeez.
All right, next item on the agenda is committee appointments. I'd like to start with the SIC Bank appointment first.
So, we, we have received requests for access to the SIC Bank. And in our conversations, past practice has been, and it's a perfectly fine past practice, that one school committee member is appointed to the SIC Bank Committee when we do our reorg every year. And at that time, the HR director, previously it was Mr. Cassidy, is appointed as the second. We have to have two. But in conversations more recently with Dr. Gilson, she feels it would be better if the HR position could be neutral and not a voting member as to whether or not the employee is allowed to access the SIC Bank. So we wanted to bring that forward for your consideration. You may want to appoint another school committee member as the second. I would say that we could maybe designate another central office administrator as the second so as not to have it be the HR person. Or you could choose to just stay with the course that we've always taken and make no changes. I'll let Dr. Gilson make any comment that she'd like to on this, on this one.
I think I just prefer to remain neutral because I do hear a lot and see a lot and there are things that, you know, I shouldn't be a voting member with that. We have central office people that might be more impartial because they don't have all of the information right at their disposal. So, I, I would advocate either another representative from the school committee or a representative from central office.
Is there any contract language that states it has to be a certain person?
No. They have, we have two representatives. And it doesn't stipulate that it has to be the HR person or that it must be two school committee members, but there have to be two members from the management side as part of the voting SIC Bank Committee.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, questions?
I can understand why that would feel like funny ground to walk on. I have no problem, I would suggest perhaps another member of the central office where it has been a central office member. But I would have no problem if, apparently I am the person that's on the, it hasn't met all year, I didn't even remember that.
We haven't had any need to meet, we haven't had requests.
Right, when there's no request, you wouldn't meet. So, I, I think we could go either way.
So my, my thinking is, I'm open to any and all suggestions on this. I just, I'm concerned about it being a school committee member and scheduling and this is a committee that needs to be able to meet on fairly short notice and adjudicate requests. And I personally could not commit to that right now. I mean, it's hard enough to commit to negotiating committees and those kinds of things. So, that, you know, in that we have full-time staff who are there every day, it gives us the ability to have meetings on fairly short notice, right?
Laura?
Central office representative, I think, would be the way to go if an employee would be okay doing that, taking on that.
So my opinion, I actually, I've served on the SIC Bank Committee as a school committee member and I've also served it as a union member, as a teacher.
Oh, that's interesting.
And at my school, it's two and two and it is two school committee members, two teacher union members. And I think, I almost like that idea because then it puts HR and any other admin off of that decision and it kind of breaks apart that relationship so that there's no battle there and the school committee can be the bad guy if they decide to be and vote something down. So I lean towards having two school committee members and I think if someone can't make it, you could do a three-person vote or you could even have somebody maybe call in or zoom in too. So I'm not, I'm not too worried about having two school committee members.
That's a fair point. I hadn't even considered that we could do this remotely and it's probably not that big a deal in this circumstance, it's not.
Probably easier.
And they usually are pretty quick. I've done the Lunenburg ones and they are, they are quick.
If it's a refusal, I mean, it stinks to say no, but it's probably easier if it would be a school committee member than someone you have to then work with.
Yeah.
I've never experienced one that it was a vote no, but I, I've heard of them where it's just, it's just a, it's just a poor request, like it was not a detailed evidence-based request.
I could go either way.
Well, the question is, do you want to do it?
I do not want to do it. Do I want to do it?
I, I will volunteer.
All right.
You're okay doing it.
All right, all right then.
I, okay, I nominate Brian to serve on the SIC Bank, is the SIC Bank Committee? The SIC Bank, on the SIC Bank Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Brian.
Thank you for volunteering.
All right, the next committee appointment, we are going to look for appointees for a superintendent search committee, subcommittee. Today, we were, the school committee members were notified that the superintendent will be retiring at the end of the school year. So I'll open it up to discussion.
So, this was obviously the topic of discussion earlier today in our executive session and the superintendent informed us of her intent to retire, which I think we're all going to have a lot to discuss in terms of her contribution to, to our schools and our kids and our staff and ourselves over the course of the last nearly six years, seven years. And, but I don't, I don't want to get into the business of this without at least acknowledging the extraordinary gravity of this event and the contribution that you have made and the gratitude that I think I personally have and I know that the other members of this committee have. And I think there's a lot more to say in the, in the coming weeks and months as we go through this and conclude this process. But a wholehearted thank you, Dr. Burnham.
I almost feel bad because I know you don't like compliments. And the next few months, I don't think you're going to have a fun time.
So, there, we did have some discussion, some preliminary discussion in terms of how do we, how do we come about this? And I'll just kind of share my opinion to get the conversation going, which is, we, we are extraordinarily rich in Lunenburg right now with the qualifications of some of the members of our senior staff that include members of the central office, staff, administrators in our schools. We have certified, licensed, qualified, we have a potential candidate pool within our ranks. And the, the benefits of that candidate pool and a potential selection from that pool are that we could, that, that leader would have the opportunity to hit the ground running in a way that a candidate from the outside just wouldn't because they just don't have the context and knowledge that, that they would otherwise have if they were an internal candidate. All of that being said, I'm very uncomfortable narrowing the search. And so, my, my thinking here is that we should avail ourselves first to inquiring amongst our internal staff if there is interest in the position. And give our, our staff the opportunity to, to be heard and to have a conversation if they are interested about succeeding Dr. Burnham in, in her capacity. That being said, that is not to say that that is the path that we should end on. I think that that's the path that we should begin with and have that conversation, see what, what the sense is of the potential candidates, see what our sense is as a committee and then determine if we should open this up to a larger search and having to follow, you know, the, the path that the, that the state would put us on in terms of how you go about doing a superintendent search. So, so that, that's point number one. Point number two is I think that we want to move swiftly because we want to... Point number two is, I think that we want to move swiftly because we want to make a good decision, but also a decision that affords Dr. Burnham the exit that she deserves and a transition that we deserve. And so, we want to be able to move swiftly. So, maybe appointing a subcommittee of a couple of members of this committee to kind of work through the details of getting a posting and, you know, receiving notifications of interest and perhaps setting up some initial interviews.
I would agree with Peter. I think that we are, I'm not even gonna go there with you tonight. But I think we are very fortunate to be at a circumstance where we can talk to our staff that may or may not be interested in this particular position, which is so huge and has so very much to do. I think that it's a good start, and we may hit gold there, and if not, then we continue. I agree, we need to do this quickly. And I will say that seven years ago, when I started in this committee, we were searching for a new superintendent. And what I had envisioned, and actually, the reason for me coming on the committee, what I had envisioned, we found. And I am so pleased about that, and it is very important to me that this work continue. So, I would like to volunteer to be on a screening committee.
Laura?
Well, I definitely have no problem with Carol being on the committee. I think she's done this before, she found Dr. Burnham. So, I definitely, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I would agree. I will also save my words for Dr. Burnham for a later meeting. But I think Carol would be a great, great person to serve on a search committee, and I agree with Peter and Carol's way to proceed. I think we start with the internal candidates and go from there. Yeah, I will make a motion to appoint Carol Archimbo as the superintendent subcommittee search, subcommittee.
Second.
Should we appoint?
We need somebody else.
Yeah, I think, I would just say one at a time.
All right, all right.
Make it one.
Gee, I'm not doing the whole thing.
It's just Carol.
We can have Carol do it.
Go find somebody and get back to us, let us know.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Then we have one more committee member.
Would you accept the nomination, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I do think as the chair, that's important.
I nominate Brian Lightnin to be the second member of our superintendent search subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you, Dr. Burnham.
Communication is set up to go out to families and staff bright and early tomorrow morning. Thank you for not asking me to speak publicly tonight about this decision. It's been very difficult to come to terms with. It's time, it's time. But it has been a very emotional decision to make because I've been 100% invested in Lunenburg, so.
Not just 100.
Let me take a pass.
But 110% committed.
That's what I was gonna say.
Sooner or later, you'll have to say something more expensive.
Well, I've written it, and it's going out tomorrow. Can't read it.
All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on restructured fee proposal.
So, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the challenges with the athletic revolving account, and the combination of budgeted funds along with revolving account funds is no longer sufficient to sustain the programs that we're offering currently. And part of the discussion at that time was, let's take a look at a proposal for how we might restructure athletic fees. So, Dr. Gilson, A.D. Bigelow, and myself, we worked on this, and we have to have a place to start, so we're gonna put this proposal up and we can have discussion around the pluses and minuses of all of this and see if we need to go back to the drawing board. There's no need to take any action on any of this right now.
Right.
This, you could wait until February, March, even April. We just need to have a sense of how much we need to carry in the budget.
Right.
Because we have to, unless the committee wants to reevaluate whether we continue to offer as many options as we currently offer, that's something else that we could have discussion around. But there was a request at that meeting for us to take a look and bring a proposal back, and this is the proposal, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Gilson to speak to.
So, our themes have been, the revolving accounts are dwindling. We know this year, all of the coaching salaries went up 2% for the stipends. Bus transportation, we know from the bid received, is going up. We know next year, coaches' salaries will be up by 4%. So, the athletic budget is not, it's basically increasing, there are continued rising costs associated. So, we have two accounts that fund athletics. One is our local budget, and the other is our athletic revolving account. The reason why we have an athletic revolving account is to receive revenues and use to pay for expenses. So, these costs can include expenses such as the coaching stipends, equipment in uniforms, facility maintenance, transportation, and we also know that from previous discussion, our teams are going elsewhere, sometimes at far distances, so that's requiring also increased expenses. And we talked about arbiter pay tonight. So, arbiter pay is one of the tools that we're using to pay our officials. So, if you remember, this is a slide, I'm not gonna dwell on it, but I appreciated that Kevin Bigelow was able to provide us with all of the information across for user fee comparisons, what are other towns spending. One of the things that we decided to focus on in our conversation, we looked at fees in the closest neighboring towns such as Ayers-Shirley, and I've got them focused up here. Ayers-Shirley offered a little bit of variability in different fees for different sports, but if you average the different seasons together individually, they were arriving at an average of about $325 per season. Bromfield doesn't have many sports. You can see they have a different, it's like, single sport offerings for each season, and their fees are averaging about $300. One of the things also, Grattan Dunstable, we looked at because they are spending $600 per sport, and one of the things that has been mentioned in conversation with different coaches is that the $600 is a little bit too much and is kind of discouraging athletic students to seek out participation in the athletics that they do. Now, the challenge of this presentation is really how to show you in as simple, as simple as possible, how the local budget is working. We reserve an amount of money, and that's then spent. Every single amount that was reserved in the local budget was spent, and that came out to an amount of $258,106 for last fiscal year. We also looked at what revenue we're bringing in, and the revenue that we're bringing in is the user fees and the gate receipts. And so, looking at the user fees for middle, high school, like, for the fall, the winter and spring sports seasons, and looking at what our costs are and the increases in low-income students that require either a reduced fee or a waiver, we are recognizing that the user fees are totaling about $133,000. The gate receipts are coming in at $8,500, and so, the total revenue that is going into the revolving budget is about $142,000. If you look at money going out from the athletic revolving, we're spending, we spent $76,051,000 for officials, and we fund an athletic secretary, and we fund the coach, all of the coaching stipends. And so, you know, money in, not equaling money going out. How do we rectify that when we try to balance the budget? That's a continued project with working with the town accountant to reclassify expenses. Last year, we did that by focusing on unfilled positions and transferring funds and working with that to arrive at a better balance. But ultimately, we can't go on this way, and so, we took a look at our current fee schedules, and with the $133,000 that's coming in, we looked at what we're spending for the total athletic budget, which is about $512,000. So, our user fees for all the different sports seasons account for 26% of the total budget, okay, for the athletics with the local and revolving factored in altogether. So, taking into account what other surrounding towns are doing, we looked at generating a proposal and projected the number of students, we used FY '24 total participation at the high school and the middle school, and then we kind of ran a projection. If we had received, and we didn't, if we had received every student entering at full pay, full pay would have been $250. So, every student coming in would have given us a maximum total of $193,000, which, considering your different ranges, not, I would, I don't know exactly the percentage of kids that were on the full pay, but you also had the sibling discount for first sibling, second sibling, you know, and you also had the discount for if you qualify for the reduced lunch through our lunch program, and if you also, there's some kids that have free lunch offered. Everybody has free lunch now, but there's certain forms that are designated that qualify students participating in athletic for those fee supports. So, looking at, as I said, the way of, an interesting way of looking at this was, okay, how are our collective group of parents funding the program? With a program total of $512, the user fee is coming in at $133. It ends up being the collective group of parents that are paying user fees turns out to be about 26% of the total athletic budget, okay? So, then, we, on the basis of Ayers-Shirley, Grattan Dunstable, and Bromfield, we decided we needed to come up with something very, what we thought might be reasonable, and not necessarily the 600 that they're asking people to pay per sports season, you know, there, because we thought that that would discourage participation. We like the comprehensive part of our athletics, and Kevin Bigelow does a great job in terms of, you know, getting kids out there to play. It's competitive, and we took a look, and we started with pricing fees at $325 per season for the first student in the family. We offered, we priced, started there, middle school fees, $275. Then, we offered what we call a sibling reduction, so not anymore, you know, the second child in the family or the third child, and, you know, and we offered a 25% discount for any sibling that's participated. Then, we looked at reduced fees, and that would be at a 50% discount, and of course, the waiver is free. We also put a family cap in there of $1,500, and that would look at students who were in middle school and students who were in high school. And as I said, the user fees were based, where I arrived at, based on neighboring towns. And then, we kind of, I did some impact projection, and as I said, right now, with the user fees coming in, they're supporting 26% of the amount total that we pay for athletics. Considering this year, athletics is going to increase just by the pure nature of coaching salaries, officials, and transportation. The baseline increase is at least 2.5%. Transportation will be more. So, if we are going to, and I don't know where we'll end up at the end of this year, but to continue to support the athletic budget at 26%, we would need to bring in revenue from the user fees at 130, almost $137,000. Last past year, with the people participating, we just barely made, you know, the $134,000. So, I, we're gonna, have to continue to go through and look at, next year, we're looking at a 4% increase. So, you know, ultimately, the nature of athletics that we're finding is that it continues to contribute to increases in the budget, and we're looking to have a local school budget that is balanced and providing for not only the sports needs, but the music needs and the educational needs of every single child in town. And so, so we're proposing the change in fees, and we are continuing to look at what our neighbors are doing, but I would propose these fees, you know, bring, you know, and ask that we discuss them, but I also would look at this to reevaluate annually. We do not know where the user fees are gonna come in because we haven't gone through all three seasons yet. We're evaluating based on past user participation and past fee structure. And then, I think that this is one account that, you know, in an effort to be transparent, we want to make sure that we are not operating with a robust revolving account for athletics. It's important to be taking in fees, but I think you have to be responsive and responsible to your parents that are helping and supporting their students to play. And so, I would propose that not only, I'm doing this presentation now, I'd ask you to consider a discussion about the fee structure, you know, there are variables in that, and then I'd ask to continue to come back, where we continue to reevaluate the proposed fees that we put in place for families to can really look at how we're continuing to fund the combination of the local, basically using the revolving account to use the revenue to offset the total cost of athletics. So.
What questions or comments?
And I'd also offer, for anybody who's not on the Zoom, A.D. Bigelow is on the Zoom, so if you had questions that you wanted information from him, he is here to answer those questions.
Thank you. What questions do the committee members have?
My, thank you, this is great work. This is the most comprehensive view that we've had in my tenure on this committee in terms of understanding how this kind of shakes out from a budget perspective, and I appreciate the work of the A.D. and yourself to present this and put it together. I'm sure this represents many hours of work to figure this out. That 20- That twenty-six percent that you cited that, you know, seems to be a kind of a where we're at in terms of the contribution from, from fees. Do you have a sense of, or were you able to get a sense when you were doing the comps? Like, is that twenty-six percent also, you know, like, three hundred dollars in Lunenburg might not be three hundred dollars in, in Harvard or three hundred dollars in Air or Shirley. So, you know, like, is the fee contribution comparable in those states as a percentage of the, states in those towns as a, as a percentage of the total budget? Did you, were you able to ascertain that?
To be honest with you, I have not. And, you know, I just got, I've needed to make sure that you could understand this presentation related to Lunenburg. You know, but I, one of the things that we did, I recognize that the dollar here may not be the same dollar somewhere else. But I did look at per pupil expenditure across every single town. And, you know, we, per pupil expenditure is what is spent across, you know, and, and that's the best unit measure. I don't know if twenty-six percent is the same. It was surprising to me, like, that it actually turned out to be twenty-six percent, which was like the amount of user fees we're going to take in. It's almost impossible until you have years of trends focused on that to make strong predictions that are accurate. But I also think that when you consider that the percentage of low income students across the past ten years at the high school has ramped up from being a very small amount, but it's increased by ten percent. And so, you know, I think that within the fee structure, it's incumbent on us to make sure that we're proposing a realistic measure that doesn't strap anyone in the district. So rather than doing variability between the different sports as Air Shirley has done, we went with an equity-based approach, which we also felt, the equity-based approach said no one sport is better than another sport. And, you know, so we, we kind of felt that that was important. So we, we had to start somewhere because what was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is now going to be, it, it's continuing to rise. And it will rise for each year based on transportation, based on coaching, based on officials. It, it is rising. And so we can't, you know, as we look to provide a comprehensive program and as we're seeing the themes across our revolving accounts, we need to make sure that our budget is as responsible, comprehensive and realistic as we can make it. And I think, you know, as we see the trend in the revolving accounts, we're recognizing that we, though we aspire to do it all, we can't do it all. And I think it's, you know, there's, there is, you know, a means to kind of evaluating where you need your parents to support. And so I thought, looking at what the funding level is now that we're taking in from the parent group as a collective, you know, it's recognizing that and how to maintain.
I think that's the right way to look at it. I think, you know, back to the conversation we had a month or two ago. I, my, my feeling is in an ideal world, these fees wouldn't exist at all.
Yes.
And there are some, there are some communities out there that they don't have fees and they're, God bless them. We're not living in an ideal world, just like the conversation we just had around space and planning for space.
Yep.
We're not living in an ideal world and where we have to land is what's practical. And if we want to run these programs with the degree of quality that we have been running them and, and with the variety of programs that we've offered in, in recent history. And we have got to adjust for rising costs. I, I think that, you know, my personal take, and I am a guy that writes a lot of these checks, is this is reasonable and responsible. However, I do think that this needs to go through some kind of process that we can agree to and a timeline. I, I'd like to be able to land on this so that you have more predictability when we get to a final budget. But I feel as if this is something that we need to afford parents the opportunity to learn about this, comment. Maybe we have an, you know, a athletic advisory board meeting and, and welcome some public comment and questions around it. But I, I think that we do need to shake this out a little bit and, and come back with a, you know, perhaps it's even a recommendation from booster leaders or something along those lines.
Right, yep.
Because the, ultimately, you know, those are the folks that are going to be footing the bill for this.
Yes, and the other thing too, I think, we, we did have a conversation about, this is not an insignificant one-year increase. And that's where we were having the conversation about the need to reevaluate. Build in maybe small increases.
Yeah.
And map that out so that parents can see, here's the next three years. The fee is going to go up one and a half percent, a ten-dollar, so that parents can plan for and, you know, predict and budget for their, for their households as well if, if they know in advance what next year is, is going to cost. It's not unlike the pre-K tuition. We, we tell, yep, in the next however many years, it's a four percent increase, it's a four percent increase. I think that that helps parents. We actually debated about not going to this level, but that keeps us in deficit operation longer. So it's, it's not going to help.
One other comment that I, I do want to make on this because of the significant amount of participation that we have in students that are operating or, or families that are paying a, a reduced rate. I had made the comment a few weeks ago, you know, like, I, I think we do need to accommodate for, for families that can't afford this. But on the other hand, and this was in the context of like middle school activity fees and those kinds of things, I'm not sure that as the parent of a participating child, I should be offsetting that cost, right?
No, the cost is not.
And the local budget, in my opinion, should be, should be offsetting that, that cost. In this case, where it's not a fully funded by participant fees kind of situation, it, it doesn't, it's not really applicable in this case because the fees are only funding twenty-six percent. The, the town and the, the public is funding the other seventy-four percent or whatever that number is. So, so I just want to stipulate that, like, you know, th, this is, we're, we're, I'm not sure what the fair share is, but, but it isn't an unfair share.
Right, and that's why I would keep emphasizing what's reasonable to families and what's responsible relative to the total school budget. Local budget, revolving accounts. And this is not one where we want to, you know, save money or build, create a revenue building mechanism. It's not. I want to be completely transparent so that user fees are user fees and they're equitable for all families.
And you may have stepped away from the table, but at the outset, you know, I let the committee know. No action needs to be taken on this tonight. No action needs to be taken on this next meeting. We are going to have to come to some decision before we finalize the budget because we would have to build more into the budget.
Yep.
If, if we're not going in this direction, right? But there's plenty of time and that was intentional so that word can get out for families. They can ponder it, they can let us know and feedback can come directly to my office. And we'll report back if we, if we have any feedback. But if you wanted us to consider a different thing and go back to the drawing board, we could do that too, or, or we could just sit with this thought for a little bit of time.
I think this is a good start. Like, I, I don't want to let perfect be the enemy of good enough here, right? Like, we got a lot to do. And, and I, I think this is something that needs to get floated. We need to get feedback. This isn't the final, final thing. We can adjust it, we can maybe look at a long-term plan. We can take advice in terms of what level of transparency this thing needs in the future. Because it's great to have transparency, but the reality is, is that we haven't had transparency really on this.
On this.
On this.
And, and as a result of that, I think that there is some distrust. And we have an obligation to rebuild some of that. And, you know, so these are conversations that we should be having over the course of the next several weeks or a couple of months that we can, we can land on this.
Thank you, I would agree. I, I think this is a good place to, to start and, and admin has a good direction to go from here. Mr. Bigelow, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I do not unless anyone has any questions for me.
Nope, thank you.
No, thank you for your hard work.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next item in the agenda is recommendations on cell phone use.
Can we table this? Anthony's not here, this is kind of one of his passions and it's late. Can we just wait until another meeting? Can we table?
We could, I know the principal is here, so I don't know if we want to at least hear.
Oh, my gosh, did you wait this whole time? Never mind. Never mind, we don't need to hear from you.
We're going to information two and a half hours.
Oh, my gosh, I'm the cruelest person in the world.
Thank you, good evening, thank you for having me tonight. Dr. Burnham asked me to gather some information from some specific groups in the middle and the high school around cell phone policy. Specifically, whether it would be beneficial for school committee to develop a policy that would help enforce the use of cell phones in schools. So I was able to have some really good conversations with my middle school advisory council, my high school advisory council, with my department head leadership team at the high school, and then actually some informal conversations with some other faculty and teachers within the building. So going to talk to you about some highlights of things that I pulled out. The first thing that we had talked about, we all agree that cell phones are distracting to the classroom environment. We, we aren't saying that that's not, that, that is a fact. We understand that. And that I think whether it comes from policy from the school committee or policy in our handbooks, that we need to remain, classrooms need to remain to be sacred. So I think some of the discussions were around apprehension around a zero tolerance policy around cell phones because of the amount of workforce it would take to enforce that. I mean, I think about having eight hundred and twenty kids walk through my building. Am I collecting those? Am I storing them? If I lose them, are we replacing them? Am I passing them back? Like, a zero tolerance policy, I think, is untenable unless, especially if it's an unfunded mandate, if it's something that I don't have resources in order to provide that. What we did agree is that we have procedures developed within our school advisory councils that allow us the best way to address the cell phone use. So it allows us to, parents, teachers and administrators that are in the building to kind of develop yearly in our year, in our handbooks, what our cell phone procedures are. So all of us agreed that those procedures are pretty good. One of the benefits of that, and not a full policy from the school committee, is we're able to review those yearly and we can make quick changes to those as we see quick changes in technology. Maybe we needed to make a quick change around what our cell phone policy is. Like I said, those zero tolerance policies, those would affect kids that need their cell phones for, you know, a diabetic check or kids that need their cell phones that we've now, we've now provided a safer app to every student in six through twelve in order to have something on their phone. And God forbid that there was an emergency or they're reporting bullying, now they're not going to have access to that application. Many athletic teams use their sports app to contact students around a schedule change or a practice change. Students wouldn't have the availability to have that. So I think the feedback was, my recommendation would be if that we want cell phone policy, that we keep it in individual schools' handbooks so it's developmentally appropriate for each building, as we have with different things. But if school committee was to develop a policy, please just keep that classroom instruction sacred and maybe not a zero tolerance policy, which would require additional funds. So those, that's the feedback that I got from the groups that I, I spoke to and I'm willing to answer any questions.
Now, just to offer some additional information relative to the cell phone issue. When we had our meeting with the delegation a little bit ago, Senator Cronin talked about concern around, you know, students and cell phone use in schools and seemed like he was interested in conversation around legislation. So they're talking about this at a state level. So what I had offered to him at that time was it might be beneficial for him to hear directly from administrators who deal with this, day in and day out, with different age groups of kids, so on and so forth. So I did reach out to his office right after the new year and offered to facilitate pulling a, a meeting together. And we pushed that invitation out, it will happen by Zoom, it'll happen next week. We pushed that invitation out to all of the principals of the mid-watch league. And I pushed it out to all of the superintendents in our snow zone and asked them to extend that invitation to their principals. And we have had some respond that they will be attending that meeting. So it'll be interesting to get some perspective from people outside of Lunenburg. Are, are they seeing the same sorts of things? Do they feel the same sorts of things? You know, like I explained to the superintendents and, you know, to our own administrators, legislation's great if it's not another unfunded mandate that makes things very difficult for us. So it's really important for the principals to be heard so that whatever comes from it would be something that would be a benefit and not something that makes for additional hardship and challenge. So we can, knowing that Mr. Schoolenbrini wants to be involved with this conversation, we can bring this back at the next meeting or the first meeting in February with more feedback from, from that, that meeting with Senator Cronin and continue to have conversation around it. But I just wanted to provide that information, that this is not where this conversation is ending. We, we are participating in a regional conversation about what the state may or may not want to pursue relative to cell phone use.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore?
Because of the late hour, I, I don't want to prolong this discussion given that I don't think this discussion is going to end tonight. But I, I have a lot of questions on this, as I, I've already shared with you via email. I, I think that cell phones and social media are contributing to, are the biggest contributor to the mental health crisis that our students are facing today. And I think that it is incumbent upon us to create some space for our kids when they are learning, to not have that thing vibrating in their pocket. I just think that. And I'm mindful of your opening statement, which is cell phones are a distraction. And I have a really hard time rationalizing that against this, classrooms are sacred. I honestly don't know what that means and I'd be, love for you to comment on what you actually mean by that.
Mm-hmm.
And that our current policies are effective. I'd like to understand what do you mean by that and how is it effective? Because I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm buying that either.
Sure.
So, and, and I do think that this needs a look. And I honestly think that policy could put us in a position where we are empowering teachers to create that space. I, I suspect that we have awesome teachers out there, you know, some teachers that are just absolutely. You know, some teachers that are just absolute experts in their field, enthusiastic, awesome, awesome teachers. They're not the hardasses that are going to tell the kid to take the phone, you know, from under their desk or they're sneaking it or whatever's happening in that classroom. And I think there's a lot of that happening, quite frankly, today. Um, and, and I, I think that there is an opportunity to create some safe space. Um, now, it doesn't need to be, put the thing in a Faraday package at the beginning of the day, lock it away, and they pick it up at the end of the day. I mean, there, there are, there's plenty of space in between, right? That this doesn't have to be a zero tolerance or a, or, or anything that even comes close to that description. But I think that we have the ability to, to, to talk this through, really understand if there are tools that we can provide that, that are a little bit of a blanket because this is the way we're going to do things in Lunenburg. And I just, right now, I don't, I don't think that that is clear, that we have that clear path right now. And, 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 and at least one other school committee member, I know agrees with me on this. So, you know, to that extent, I, I think that we need to shake this out a little bit.
Just to answer your question, Mr. Beardmore, around what I meant around keeping classrooms sacred. And I think we're still on, on the same page with what that is. That means that cellphones either get turned in, they get hung on a door in a, in a shoe thing so that they aren't distracting to the actual classroom environment, actual teaching that's going on in those classrooms. Now, in the high school, we have a policy where students can have their phones on them. They can use them in the hallway or in the cafeteria. So, um, that's what I meant by keeping classrooms sacred. Because I agree with you. All the mental health issues, my pushback would be, I, I like the fact that we're trying to create a safe space for students. Um, when in a student's life are they going to have been taken from their phone for that amount of time during a school day? You know what I mean? The school would be the only place that that ever happened. So the extinction burst from having those phones, we, we need to be prepared in order, when I get non-compliance, even if it's 5%, that's 40 kids not turning in their phones. Like, these are the things that I worry about. It's the implement, implementation of a blanket policy.
I think it comes down to trusting the teachers, classroom management. And I think we asked for feedback, and the feedback here is that they're managing.
Ms. Ashenbo.
Um, no, I, I don't have a great deal to say about this. I think, I think that when we set policy, it is rigid often. If we can set a policy that is not rigid, I don't know how that works, then we could do that. Um, but when we see something doesn't work, it, it's not easy to change policy. I think if, we have to approve the policies that are in the handbooks. So if the policy lives in the handbook, I don't have a problem with it. I'm not sure what the policy should be, but I don't have a problem with it living in the handbook instead of in our policy. Because I think the same thing can be done and it's more flexible.
I would agree with Ms. Ashenbo. Um, my big thing on cellphones, I think, is, uh, our teachers need to be teaching life skills. Uh, if they, once they graduate and they get a job, they can't just be on their phone because now my boss isn't locking up my phone anymore. Um, they have to have those life skills to know when they can take out their phone and when they can't. And that's the hope that the, the students are learning that in school. Any discussion on recommendations on cellphone use?
So we will bring this back up?
Yeah, we can bring this back up, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you for waiting.
Next item on the agenda is discussion on school committee resolutions. So I did, uh, upload a draft or an updated draft. It definitely is a draft. Open to feedback, also you can email me feedback. Also, the other aspect, I, I was having a hard time coming up with specific numbers and data points to align. So if you have recommendations on data points that we could include, I would be open to suggestions there. And I can work with, uh, Dr. Burnham to get those data points if I am not able to get those. But I, I threw in a little bit of numbers, but I didn't have a ton of numbers to throw in there to make it more Lunenburg-specific.
How do you know how to write like this?
He's a good writer.
This is good, he really is.
Yeah. Even if you are a math teacher.
I was, you're a math teacher.
He was really good on policy subcommittee, too.
Yeah, I, um, just, and, and take this for what it's worth, which is not a lot, but, um, I, I actually don't think that this document should get bogged down in deep numeric justification.
Because you were the one who had said, like, throw some data points.
Yeah, no, no.
I was trying to find some.
Now that I see it, right? Now that I see it, I'm like, well, I'm not sure that it fits. And at the end of the day, the problem is very self-evident. You don't actually need numbers to describe it, right?
I could throw in more bus numbers, like five years.
I'm sure you can. The, the state has put us on a path where, you know, 40% of our budget, which come from the state, is increasing at half a percent.
Yeah.
And our costs are increasing at more than 5%. And it's not sustainable.
And I think more and more towns are speaking up about it.
It doesn't, but it doesn't, it doesn't take, it doesn't take, you know, a degree in statistics or, or, or a dissertation to, to make that case. And I, I know I gave you different guidance two weeks ago, so I, I.
It's fine.
But I, but as I read the document, it was like, you know what? This could actually be, this could actually be a little bit more direct. The, the other, just, again, take it for what it's worth. I, I'm not sure that we need to stipulate the solution here, right? Like.
Yeah, I agree.
In, in my view, we need an indexed solution. It needs to be indexed to something. CPI or inflation or whatever, right?
Well, let them figure it out.
But at the end of the day, let them figure, they're going to, by the way, they're gonna figure, you know, like, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do a resolution, you know, like.
Were already created and they had a solution. And I was like, I don't know if I really took away a lot of the solutions, but I still left some in.
I don't think we need to really stipulate the solution other than, look, it, the, the, the state is a partner, is an education partner in all schools, not just gateway cities and, and high-needs districts.
Sure, regionals.
And, and as a, or re, or regions. Um, and, and the, the fact that they are not a partner to us right now is not only affecting our ability to educate our kids, but it's also affecting our ability to govern our town as a whole. Because when the, because when the, number one, we're spending a whole lot of needless time going out there campaigning for overrides and things like that that we shouldn't really be put on us. The, the burden should not be on us to do that. But in addition to that, if, if all things being equal, our, we get a 5% increase this year, police gets a 5% increase, fire gets a 5% increase. Well, it's actually more than a 5% increase on a dollar-for-dollar basis to the schools because our 40% partner isn't keeping up with their part of the bargain, right? And so there's a cascading effect on the overall municipal government of the town. And, and, um, and I, in my mind, you, you gotta index it. You gotta give us, you gotta give us a way to keep up with our costs.
Any other feedback?
I liked the solutions.
Did you?
I did. I thought offering solutions, they don't have to take the solutions, but I thought we're, it's not just complaining, it's offering solutions and they're solutions. I mean, they're.
And by the way, you, you mentioned in your report earlier today, and I wasn't aware of the Senate President's acknowledgement.
Yeah, I'll send the YouTube.
Of the problem, like, in my mind.
And the Republican.
That's a gigantic step, you know?
Me, her too, did the same thing.
That is actual progress.
Yeah.
Well, I think somebody's been yelling a lot about it lately.
The past two years have been very frustrating.
Senator Comerford of Western Mass, she's the chair, co-chair of the Education Committee, and she's in Western Mass, and it's a big issue out there. So she was the one who posted the YouTube video.
All right, I'd love to, I'd love to watch.
Yeah, I'll send it, I could send it out.
No, I liked the solutions. And even if they don't take up the solutions, I like that we're offering solutions. I think, I think that's a good attitude to have.
Ca- uh, Carol, anything else?
Yeah, no, I just, my only comment is the longer something is, the less people read it.
Yeah.
This is my comment, you know?
I can work on that as well.
But, however, you, you are the wordsmith in the group. So if, if you think we need that many words, I go with your opinion.
I'll come up with another draft.
Yes, because this takes time.
Compared to other, he kept this very succinct.
Well, I understand that, but I'm thinking, if I was sitting here reading it, I'd go, hmm.
A lot of strike-throughs, yeah.
You know?
I think it's pretty short, especially, I think the strike-throughs make it longer.
Maybe that's what it is.
And a lot of strike-throughs.
May, maybe that's what it is.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we will move on to reports and go down the line. Get in there. 9:50.
All right, Lunenburg PACSAL met on September. January 2nd, um, we had Melanie Ray as a speaker. She is a special ed advocate. She spoke on how and why to get an advocate. There are different types of advocates. There are different organizations. And, um, that was about it. We're going through a DESI audit, and, um, there will be parent surveys sent out. So if you are a special education parent, you should respond because last year we had a lower, uh, last time we had a lower participation rate and people should respond to the survey.
I have no report.
What?
Oh, my goodness.
Nice.
How'd that happen, all right?
The holidays, man.
I will jump along then. Um, FinCom met on December 19th. It was the Budget Task Force presentation. All the documents dealing with the Budget Task Force are on the town website. And basically, those recommendations go to the Select Board. Um, the Munis upgrade will occur between January and March. Um, Chris said he would not, Mr. Menad said he would not chair next year. At the FY '24 year-end, free cash came in at 2.5 million. There will be firm budget dates. That is from Chris. Um, the next meeting is tomorrow evening. Budget meetings start on, um, February 13th. They need two more members. So people like Mr. Laytonin and Dr. Gilson, who like numbers so much, you, those are the types of people that need to go to FinCom because I have a really hard time. So, there we go.
And we're going to have a new town manager next year.
It's going to be very important.
And a new leader in our school department. And these roles become more and more.
Very important.
Uh, the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee met Monday, I had, uh, stated that as well. Uh, talked about that earlier. Uh, I did want to mention, uh, Greg Roy, uh, one of our members, he did go to also the Select Board meeting yesterday along with Mr. Jeffries. And he did make a comment about how we really want to revitalize the inside and revamp all the insides of these buildings so when you walk in, you're wowed. I thought he said that really well, um, yesterday. Um, where, whether it's this building, Ritter, and then the new town hall. Uh, and it is a work in progress. We are encouraging, uh, citizens to come. Laura Brzezowski was able to come and give some great feedback at our last meeting, too. And we're definitely open to feedback. We definitely had a lot more people come, uh, this past meeting. And again, just looking for more feedback so we can try to build up more, um, buy-in from the community. And we're meeting on, so we usually meet the first and third Monday, but we're meeting on the 22nd, which is also the school committee meeting, uh, as well. So I'll be double-duting on that one. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open up the public comment from the public. Can you just unmute yourself? All right, seeing none. I'll open up the public comment from the committee.
I encourage people to go to the Municipal Building Design Committee meeting.
They are fun.
They are fun. The architectural renderings are beautiful and the architects are very talented. Um, and it is very interesting seeing how the different architects work together, the hand drawings.